Take minutes until Erica arrives, or I get a message from her to find out if it's us.
Good. Alright, so I call the meeting to order of the Longmont House Authority Advisory Board at nine AM.
Talk about.
Do I need some packets?
I can have Andrea.
That's right.
You guys.
Erica has the packets. Um, let's see, we can have Andrea do it real quick.
Yeah.
We're doing the whole thing.
Well, it's the whole, I didn't, it's just, you know, one set.
Yeah.
So we get, oh, do you need this?
Well, I'm saying for you, I'm fine here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, actually.
But do you want a copy? We can have Andrea fill it in real quick.
Yeah, I'll, I'll listen.
Okay.
It's a little bit right here. I just wanted to see what you need.
Uh, well, obviously, all members are present other than Lauren, the board, sorry, the advisory board. Go to Agenda Two, Approval of the Minutes. Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve with the insertion of the word advisory under, um, Organization Updates, the LHAV Election Schedule. Insert the word Staff and Advisory Board and move to approve.
I will second that.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Let's go on to number three, Public Invited to be Heard. I cannot see anyone. Let's go on to number four, Organizational Updates, 4A is Bylaws Update.
Okay, so I'm going ahead and take this one. Um, so these bylaws, oh, she's, she's locked out. Erica's here. Just pause for a minute if you don't mind, so we can get these out. Sorry.
Lauren.
That's not been on that means sheet traffic.
I know, well, we took, it seemed backwards, but I went around knowing that that was there. Oh, with, yeah, I didn't do anything.
And Harold should have come in too.
Yeah, he texted. Alright, so Erica just, so you know, we started and I started taking notes, we were just starting at 4A, so I'll just send you a couple of little things that I did so far. But we're gonna pause and see if it. Right away. Just had to know when you're.
Alright.
You're good? Okay. So, for the bylaws, so, um, you may recall, we've been talking about the bylaws in the election, basically, every meeting for quite a while. Getting everything squared away, but we really are there at this point, so the bylaws, uh, updates that you see do two things. The section, uh, four, Removal Commissioner, and the new section, two vacancies, um, and the, the, the remove section above, really, this was, um, prompted by Councilmember Martin, who, when we brought the last bylaws update, that were really just changing the advisory board from five to seven members, she said, what about this? So, um, that's, this is, the City Attorney's Office wrote this up to make sure that everything with the Commissioner's terms was, um, in lockstep with the council terms. And then.
I did have a question on the officers.
Mm-hmm.
So are they actually voting for the Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, Secretary, or does it, you know, does the Mayor take over the Chairperson and the Pro Tem?
The Mayor takes over the Chairperson, the Pro Tem takes over the Vice, and then the Secretary is Harold.
Oh, it's Harold.
So, um,
They don't elect him.
I think they, yeah, yeah, let me.
No, it actually says the Mayor.
In the event the Executive Director slash Secretary role is vacant, then they can assign it. Oh, yeah, it's the first sentence, it says the Executive Director shall serve as.
Yeah.
So basically, really how that ends up showing up is he attests the Mayor's, the Board Chair's signature on.
Oh, I see where it has, the Mayor of the City shall be the Chairperson, okay, it's just not in that little border down below.
Key documents. Yeah. Gotcha, okay.
I see.
That would make sense to have it there.
That's fine, that's fine.
Unless you recommend that to them, I'm not gonna let them.
I, I just wanted it in there, I just, I was just looking for it in that section, okay.
Yeah. Um, so then there's one other statement about the removal of the Executive Director in that section.
It's Joan, I'm having trouble finding this meeting.
I'm sorry about that.
But I'm here. So. So the meeting hasn't started?
We, we did just get started.
Pardon me?
We did get started, but we're.
Hi, it's Joan, I couldn't find this meeting. The LHA. Okay. Okay, thanks. So I'm a little confused, is this the board meeting or the Commissioner's meeting?
This is the advisory board. You are welcome to join.
As it said, um, I, we were sent the agenda, and I don't know why we were missing the agenda for the board meeting.
Well, we have a board meeting tonight.
Yeah.
It says nine AM, one morning.
We will double check that. Yeah, Erica can check it.
No problem.
On the calendar invite or on the packet? The packet said that, or the calendar invite?
The, the packet from, was it from you? It was from Erica. I think. You know what? It's all good.
Okay.
I'm gonna go get a copy.
Okay.
Guess we do include those a little more, huh?
Says after City Council. I'll, I'm gonna do this. Sort that out. Okay. We'll work that out. Okay, so, um, continuing with the bylaws update, under Article Seven, Advisory Board, this is where, um, we did make some changes here in advance of the election at the Clerk's Office recommendation, just to make sure that, um, so that we can carry it all the way through from bylaws to the application, to the evaluation, um, really what we're looking for. So, it just really, we already made those changes, I just made sure that the election piece reflected that, what we're, what kind of the, the expertise that's being looked for. So, that's that, this will go to the board tonight, actually, because we happen to be on an awkward schedule this month. Put those forth for your recommendation.
Yeah.
Do we have to do a?
Can we pass a motion, just, uh, kind of be our blessing on it?
Okay, I need to approve.
Pass on to the Board Commissioners? Yeah?
You want a second?
I did.
Did, yeah.
Oh, did you? You were so quiet.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
So we finally get us a clean copy, right?
Yes, so the.
Unless there's changes tonight, right?
Uh, right, so the, I don't know if it's attached in here, but I have a clean, yes, the clean copy, this one will be get signature. That's what I have, it's a clean view.
Let's go on to Item B, uh, LHA Advisory Board Election Update.
So we are ready to open up the application period tomorrow. Um, the, everything is the same as, in terms of the schedule as the last time we spoke. So if we want to recap that, we can, if you have, it's all in the minute, minutes as well. So, the only change, however, is that, um, the, the council appointment date is not gonna be December thirteenth, it'll be December twentieth, and that's when they're doing all the rest of them as well.
Oh, okay.
So my only, uh, question for you all, I know, Arlene, you provided some feedback to my question from a couple of weeks ago about, ooh, is there anybody we should target? Because we're gonna make it public, but then if we have certain people we want to see it, we can definitely share it. So if there's anybody else that you'd recommend, I'm giving the Clerk's Office a list today.
We should maybe even reach out to Cameron and say, hey, is there anybody in his law firm that would like to participate in this?
And I do, yeah. Or even, you know, some of the other law firms I think it's, might be familiar with, so we can get a legal representative in that, which I think is, you know. I just would like to see sort of a, kind of a nice variety, um, how do we reach the minorities, the Hispanic and that, how do we reach them?
So we have really good, um, in our Community and Neighborhood Resources Division, we have really good contacts with, um, cultural brokers that have, um, really, just great contacts in the community for ways to share that, so we can utilize them, it's Carmen Ramirez's group. We could share this with her and ask her to send it around as well. Um, and then we're going to share it with, oh, I should put this on, oh, I do have Anne Marie on here. Anne Marie Jensen runs that Echo Group, if you recall, that East County Housing Opportunity Group. They're really affordable housing advocates, and she has made sure that her, um, group representation is, is diverse as well, so we can share with her and, and encourage her to pass along to her connections as well.
Okay.
Couple things.
As long as it gets out, you know, then, then the emphasis is on them, as to whether or not they, they're going to do something, so, yeah, I just, that way we can't, somebody can't say, well, you forgot us, or you didn't, we didn't get it, I think if we at least move it out, if we're okay.
I'll reach out to a big, I actually.
Okay. Um, if you want, I'm gonna do, I'm making an email list, so if you want to share that, I can do that.
So I wonder if, uh, isn't it the Front Range Community College, something like that would be interested as far as what kind of things they could bring to the table that might benefit? Could there be trainings, could there be, you know, what kind of things could they bring, as far as classes or something like that comes? I don't know, now that we've opened it up to seven.
Right.
Seven people.
You can broaden it, you know, professors.
Okay.
Chamber of Commerce might be good, yes.
Yeah. They could get all of them.
Are you directly marketing, you know, sending direct information to these groups?
Yes, I'm making an email list to go for a targeted distribution, and then all of the, um, public ones as well.
Does our center have a board?
They do.
Does that would be a reverse?
Yeah.
Trying to think of a, um, a couple of specific, it's me like, you know, but I don't know, we have any, any communion connection somewhere?
Something I would be kind of, you know, give you some good contacts.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I will also let you know, I, I put on here, um, just, this is just the distribution to either go for it yourself or share, so I included the LHDC Board members, just so they can share with their contacts. I mentioned Cameron and Anne Marie from Echo, Jeff King is from First Bank, he has done some of the lending on the,
Yeah.
on the, um, like Aspen Meadows, for example, some of the development projects. And then we have a couple other lenders that we've, on the city housing side, been talking to about, um, inclusionary housing, Lonnie Jenkins and John Creighton. I, I need to get, um, Gary Kinsey, he is a former city employee that has done, he did that Kinsey Apartments, that's behind, um, McDonald's on Nineteenth, he did that kind of on, on his own, just gonna send it there. And then a couple other, Scott McAden is an affordable developer here, and, um, we have a, a real estate agent contact that's given the city a lot of good data that we've used in some of our city housing. I'm talking about targeted distribution for advisory board election.
Yeah.
Nomination.
I'm sorry?
Slash support nomination.
Correct.
Yeah, you said election.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Right. Actually, I have it on as election on the, the agenda as well.
Which is where we're gonna get you.
That doesn't make any sense, does it?
That's ours.
I can't hear someone over you.
No problem.
Long skinny table.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
I, I can hear you, and she's, I was excited when the president, when he was hearing it, it's over the.
Over the air.
Right. Okay, so, um, Tom, if you don't mind, if you have anybody's email that you'd like me to include, I'll just put this on the list. I'm gonna send this off, they wanna do this, um, all first thing tomorrow morning, so I'll get this over to the Clerk's Office this afternoon.
I'll get it down today, yeah.
Okay.
So, disabilities.
Uh, yeah, we, the CPWD basically is attached to Village Place, or, you know, okay, it's right there. So we've got contacts there as well we can include.
At least just reach out.
It's attached to it, but I thought I read something that it's not part of it.
Right, it's not part of it, I should have just said, it's adjacent, they're aware of LH, et cetera.
Adjacent, yeah.
And so the last thing is, um, you all need to decide when you want to hold your, uh, interviews, which needs to be the week of, December first. These are minutes, actually, so you don't have to go through finding it. December fourth, first through the ninth. So, uh, you don't have to decide today, but if you want to coordinate amongst yourselves with Lauren, maybe as well, to set that up, uh, we'll just want to make sure we have that set by the time the, um, application period ends, which is November. That's not on our minutes. Which is on our schedule.
So the fourth is a Sunday, right?
The.
Oh, am I, is it November instead?
Yeah, no, yeah, December start, the first is on a Thursday. Yeah, you're the working, the working partner here, Tom, so you can call it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get some dates.
Okay, just, yeah, Lauren.
Email us, but.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So the fourth through the eleventh.
Yeah.
The first.
The first through the ninth, yeah, because November thirty is the application deadline. The information that you're gonna send out to, that, you know, like we were talking to Target, to Chamber and specifically, could you, can you box that up and send it to me?
Sure.
Then I can quickly contact people that I've heard are interested, so.
Sure.
And I can just give them the, this is what to do.
Okay, can do that.
Thanks.
Alright, so let's go on to Item C, the twenty twenty-three Board Meeting Schedule.
Uh, so I just wanted to, the, the board is looking at setting their schedule, and I wanted to, um, just give you a heads up that we're gonna be moving it from the first Tuesday of the month to the third Tuesday of the month. Um, and that was partly because it ended up getting pretty challenged, we never had the reports ready on time that early in the month for the, for the prior lookback. Um, and then that worked out well with, with the board's schedule. So that then means that, that this meeting is held on the same day as the board meeting for all of twenty twenty-three, except for the January meeting, um.
Why don't we do it like the week ahead?
Yeah, that's what I was, the second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday.
So I was going to propose that you either think about that maybe now, or if you wanna wait till, the first January meeting is set for the third Tuesday right now, which is not the same as the board, but you could decide with the new members if you wanted, or you could just have that set out so they understand what they're getting into.
Yeah, I would, I would like to communicate that to them now, so what if they, you know, if they do get elected, we're like, we are, we are going to meet for next year on the second Tuesday.
I agree. Okay.
Start with January.
Start January.
Okay.
I'm looking at the December meeting, maybe it would be good to have it on the second Tuesday, because it's right before Christmas.
Um, and, right, and we don't have a board meeting in December. So that's, if you guys want to propose that, that's fine, um.
What are you doing?
Yeah, let's do that.
Do the second Tuesday, and, okay, so the thirteen.
Yeah, second Tuesday, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, so keep the November fifteenth one as is.
Yeah.
Move December, or move to the second Tuesday starting December, um. Oh, I'll, for the November meeting, we'll lay out a, a dates, the calendar of dates.
Yeah, my whole calendar, okay.
Okay, that was that.
Let's go on to number five, Development Project Updates.
Uh, so, just highlighting a couple things, um, for Village Place, the syndication, the residents are, are quite eager to see, see some, see some things happen. We are still on the same schedule that we gave earlier in the year, where we were going to be really doing design heavily at the first of twenty twenty-four. Um, so what we're doing right now is, we are speaking with an existing investor about how that exit will look. We're meeting actually with attorneys and, um, accountants and our consultant all this afternoon to talk about what option looks best. And then, um, that's really the first step, because that will then plan out what we need to do going forward in terms of, like, do we do the exit first? And then, or closing, and what should that look like? But in the meantime, I am getting started, um, on doing an RFP for Architecture and Design. So we're putting that together, and then getting that out so that we can hit the ground running with that the first of the year. So we're gonna start also right now, um, the resident survey process, talking about what kind of things they'd like to see as we put together that architecture contract.
You didn't, yes.
Alright, we wrote it down, we wrote down everything that we should remember for Village Place.
Oh.
So, it's a list that we knew of, you know, for C.
Yeah.
Um, so, the rest of, the end of this year, we'll be doing that architecture contracting process and working with the investors to figure out what our plan will be for that exit.
So then the actual project is gonna start in twenty twenty-four?
Uh, yes, so the, so that's, I'm sorry, I meant to say, January first is when we start the design of twenty twenty-three. We will close on the financing by the end of twenty twenty-three and then start construction in twenty twenty-four. Yeah, sorry, I think, I think I mixed up those numbers before. Um, we are working also with the city team doing the Kaufman Street Busway, and we're trying to make sure that our construction coordinates to make it as, at least, in the least amount of, um, headache as possible. Uh, but also, we're having some really good, um, affinities, because they're going to be doing some of the storm drain work for us, it's really needed for that parking lot, so it all ties together, and that is appropriately within their scope, and so that's really great, that we don't have to, we're back into their design.
It's an, it's an alley that comes off of, uh, Long Beach, that is an alley that we own that moves into the parking lot. So, drainage is intermixed in that area, and so that's why they're trying to deal with that as well.
So that will be cost savings on our side, we can back into their design, and they're gonna cover most of the underground pieces for that. Um, for the Hoover Land, right over here, we'll take a little tour after the meeting, it's just, you know, it's just grass. We are, we had our first interview for Development Partners yesterday, we have one more this afternoon at two tomorrow. So we're, um, in deep, did, um, wading through developer opportunities to see what might make sense, and then coming up with, once we select them, then we'll really start to say, what, does a, does the schedule look like? What do the funding sources, how should we arrange all of that to get the ARPA money spent that we wanna spend, but also bring in whatever else is needed? So that is.
And it's multifamily.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, it won't be age restricted, we're not looking to make it age restricted, so it'll be family oriented housing. Um, I think the thing that's coming into play now, most of the projects we're gonna look at because of interest rates and just where the market is, um, and they talked about it yesterday, is maximizing density in the number of units, um, because you're gonna need that to support, uh, the, the construction loan and perm loans and things like that. And, and honestly, I think in the recent case, the interest rates are probably gonna control some timing too, um, as we watch it, because, you know, just how much will we be able to get in this market and what that looks like, we're gonna have to pay pretty close attention to all of these things.
Markets are really not the schedule, like, what makes sense to hurry up and what makes sense to just let it sit for a second maybe?
I'm not, I'm not real disappointed that we didn't, that we pushed it off, because we have been caught in higher interest rates if we would have done it on the original schedule. Maybe pushing the closing to later. You know?
As long as we can get the ARPA, the money spent, and the lands controlled, have a development partner so we know what the plan should be going forward. Um, and then.
When's, uh, when's your goal to have a decision made on, that, is it sometime this month or next month?
So we.
Is it due now?
Yeah, probably next week.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We're gonna, playing it by ear to see how closely it all, you know, see how much the spread look like.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it's close, we may pull the top two back in and get more in depth with them on certain issues, you know? Um, so I think it just depends on what we see.
Where are we on the naming?
Uh, we still need to speak with Stewart Family Foundation.
Still haven't got that.
No, no, to be honest, um, but we have a plan, but we, I just haven't been able to.
Yeah.
Um, but that is, the plan is to, to go to them. So I wanted to touch base on the Aspen Meadows flooring, um, yeah. So, um, the latest is, the, whenever this type of thing happens, the manufacturer will do whatever they can to not, um, claim responsibility. And so, we are meeting actively with Palace and with the architect to figure out what the best plan is. Our preference is to go through an insurance claim, because then we could get the whole thing redone, this is what insurance is there for, this is what it should be. What we're talking to them is, um, the, the architecture firm, you know, they're, they're pretty concerned that this, that it's not that simple, and that, um, it turns into a two-year legal thing, and, um, she's afraid that's gonna put her out of business, because, so, we're letting her come up with a proposal to fix it otherwise, or else we have to go with the insurance. We don't have a source to just, um, do that on our own.
Or, or something.
They are, so, we took Palace in and did a tour, and showed that now even the areas that they did that test run on to see if they could, um, reuse the flooring, but fix the issue, it's not working. So, um, this is, it's, it's all in progress. We're meeting with them next week to talk about that, okay, what's your proposal then, or else we have to go to insurance, and we will just pull the trigger and go, see the idea, so. It's in progress, it was, it's really fortunate. So. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is, we're starting to get some very creative, um, purp- proposals for partnerships with the LHA. Private developers are, or existing, affordable housing, are looking for the LHA to partner with them for things like, um, property management, or, I, I just think they see a lot of opportunity, and also, they might be struggling with, I don't know, everybody's struggling in some way with, uh, the rent changes or economics or something, but one specific interesting one is the, um, there's a mobile home park that is owner, I'm sorry, resident owned, they did that a couple years ago, um, this, that is like the, the latest thing for mobile home parks, is if you can get them to be resident owned, they can have control of their rent structure and costs, and it remains affordable. And so we, we did, the city assisted, um, one park to become resident owned a couple years ago, um, and that's great. Now, since that was one of the first wave, now we're seeing the second step, what comes next? Well, now they don't actually really have great, um, capacity for maintenance and capital improvements and property management and all of those things, so, one reached out to us to, uh, see if we could discuss LHA having an agreement to, to perform some of those services, and then have it a revenue stream for LHA without, you know, necessarily having the liability of having the property. Um, we are right now, we have, we dipped our toes in that pond, because we do have one affordable, um, apartment complex that they wanted to do, put affordable units on site as part of their inclusionary housing requirement, but they just didn't, they weren't, they didn't know, you know, how to do rents and get an appliance. So, um, Lisa's group does that in this week, and so we, for a fee, perform that work for them. So we do have a little bit of precedence there, it seems like the interest is expanding.
Yeah, the issue in the mobile home park is gonna be, A, uh, they're gonna have to, uh, generate enough revenue to hire a property man, or to let us hire a property manager, and then they're also gonna have to be able. And then they're also gonna have to be able to pick up the administrative overhead that's associated with that. And um, and then obviously, extra to go in to kind of find balance for us. And so the question for them, I asked Molly to send her, because they went, they went to Molly, ask her to send back, say, are you prepared to do these things? And if you're not prepared to do those things, you know, we're not gonna come into it and stress our system even more. So um, we'll see what they, what they say.
Yeah, so we would just be having, you know, come up with the cost and have some sort of market on that.
Yeah.
Is this being done anywhere else in the state?
Not that I've heard of, but we haven't, haven't dug in to reach out and find out. Um, which has been very common, this is discussion about having the residents take over ownership is very prevalent. And I think that that's only within the last few years, and I think that those very first ones that went through are now, this is probably gonna be kind of common.
Yeah, I think it's kind of like, now what do we do? And so it's, it's those unintended consequences of some of these programs we're getting, and oh, it's great, residents own it. And then the city, they're going, now what do we do?
Yeah, that's gonna be an interesting dynamic.
Yep.
Because um with the owner telling the manager what to do, it's a little different, right? So, yeah, that's a, that's a tricky one, you know, not just financially, but, yeah.
In terms, in terms of uh maintenance and that, do we have capacity for that too, or?
Sure, they have to absorb that too.
Yeah. They might wind up just saying maintenance.
Yeah, the benefit for them is they know that we know how to do this, we know how to manage it well. Um, and it might be a simplified payment structure for them, then going, having to go out for their contracts all the time and that type of thing.
It's kind of like the HOA concept where they hire property managers to do, it's the same thing, except I think um what they're looking at is a markup on the property manager role is probably much higher than what ours would be. And I think that's what they're looking at. On the other side of it, on the opportunities, so um we've seen a couple of projects coming citywide of which the um the be, the, the margins of them being able to do this have shifted with the markets. And so there's one project where it's almost completely designed and they were looking at construction. Folks are coming in and saying that uh it's not in traditional lending, they're not able to pencil it. Um, and they're throwing out the idea of the li tech. Funding, so it's a tax, only comes tax credit funding. And uh so a couple have approached us about the conversion of what was um originally designed as a market rate deal into a li tech deal. Um, obviously for us, uh, you know, we're saying management is something that we want if we go into this to increase the revenue streams, the ongoing revenue streams. And those actually make some a little more sense because they're gonna have to absorb that cost no matter what. And that's already factored in their pro forma, it's just they're trying to get the better financing model to get the deal done. So we're seeing a couple of those creep in, and I think all of that's just a product of the economy and market.
And hopefully seeing a lot of LHA stuff.
Yeah, I think, well, I think that's the difference, honestly, I think they're, they're seeing it and I think people are referring them to us now. Versus where they weren't referring any one to the housing authority.
No, no.
So.
That's all I have for development deals today.
And Christmas is definitely getting going, right?
Yeah.
Do.
Definitely, yeah. A lot of actually.
Yeah, moving dirt.
Yeah, it's a first step.
All right, let's go on to number seven, resident quality of life.
I think we skipped number six.
We skipped six, oh, did we?
Yeah, we did, budget and rent.
Number six, I am spring, but twenty twenty three budget and rents.
So Kendra, I'm gonna get kickoff because we don't have another meeting with you and before the November first board meeting where the budget's being considered. Um, so it's really all, it's, it's completely in flux right now, it's go time for Kendra and Harold putting this together. Um, so I just wanted to give just a very more high level, like what are the themes that we're seeing? As an update to you all, and then on your November fifteenth meeting, after the, the budget is approved, then Kendra will go through and be more specific about what's, what's been approved. Am I doing that, or do you want me to say? I'm gonna be very wrong.
Well, and I'll talk about Kendra and I met last week. And, and what we're seeing is, I mean, and, and it's interesting is it's also um connected to rape recidations and, and how you deal with these issues. So Village Place, for example, everything is connected and linked. So Village Place, for example, hasn't historically charged the rents that they were allowed to charge. And so where that becomes an issue is that when you go into these recindication models, it's for your investors, it's pay me now or pay me later. And so if you under-collect the revenue that you projected in the financing model, um, when you go into recidication and you transfer that property, you do all of that, they want a bigger chunk of the money. Uh, because they haven't met their financial requirements, which actually reduces then what you're able to put into the structure to redo it.
Yeah.
So we were seeing that as an issue with Village Place. Um, unfortunately, we're seeing it all over the place historically, so, well, we think. Um, and then so when you, when you look at the rent structures, um, we have been trying to keep up with it, we brought Lisa into that conversation. So I think the, the work that we've been doing recently is probably more on point, but it's the historical component of this in catching up. So we asked Kendra to pull some reports. Because when you, when you look at rent for the next year, there was a question that came up with Village Place, I just signed my lease, is that my rent? Yes, that's your rent for twelve months. And so historically, I think when they would talk about rent increases in the budget and, and we kind of followed them, not having the depth of knowledge we needed in this, we would look at it saying, well, here's the rent increase and then it's holistically applied to everything. The reality is, is that you don't collect that rent until the contract renews. And so we don't stay on half of it.
Yeah.
So I talked to, Kendra and I talked about really creating a spreadsheet that, she had most of the data in, but adding the contract date to it. So that we could accurately project when the rents were gonna come in. And, and also understand what is the rent increase that's needed? First, to catch them up to the current market and two, projecting what the market increase is going to be because it lags. So we're gonna, we've looked historically at, here's historically what, how the rents have moved. And so we're gonna do an analysis on that to go, here's what the trend line looks like, and then we're gonna hedge off of that lower. Um, so that we can somewhat catch up. We will never quite catch up because the state releases them in April. So there will be, as I said to Village Place, there will be rent increases. Um, we just, um, we're, we're fine tuning that right now.
So do you have a top of an increase, this would be going to the people, so is there a top? Say ten percent or five percent or something like that, or is that you're still working at?
So that's what I wanna see, the numbers, because, so you may have people that are on market and it's minimal, you may have people that have historically been behind. And so I don't wanna hit anyone with a ten percent increase. And so what we'll have to do once we see this is, so let's say someone is at ten percent. And let's say that the, the market, the projected market increase is two. So we're gonna come in with two percent and we may add two percent a year on top of the market increase. Um, so that we know within four years, we're gonna have, or three years, we're gonna have them caught up. But we need to do the math to understand, what does that really mean financially? So if a two percent is two bucks, we may go max a two. If two percent is a hundred dollars, then we may, we're gonna have to figure out what that sweet spot is. But yeah, you don't wanna uh hit anyone for a crazy amount, and so it's how do you accomplish that over time? So those are all things we're talking about.
Wild balancing fair housing.
Right.
Because that really comes into play with rent.
And is this, is this gonna be affecting more of the, the long-term residents more, because when you come in and you're gonna be.
Well, what I'm hearing is you're still gonna be aware of not kicking anybody out. Because, you know, like a ten percent increase would kick some of the, some folks out.
Yeah.
They're, they're fixed income and, and they, you know, they're at the whims of social security.
Right, and that's, I think, the thing that, that Molly said with the fair housing, is how do you, how do you craft the policy? Because the very things that we're, we're hearing in, in our lean spend and the numbers, you know, the very thing that we're hearing is we want this, and we want this, and we want this. The reason we're not able to do it is because we're not generating enough revenue. And, and so we're trying to balance all of those things out. Um, because the reality for the housing authority is, um, right now, we've probably kicked close to three seventy-five, well, close to two hundred and fifty thousand. So if we take what Jillian was making and what Kenzie was making, so that's like two hundred, well, that was like two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand. You know, we've kicked about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand into the operations um with us taking on this work. So if you had to hire an executive director to do this, you wouldn't have that, and the pressures would be even greater. So we're gonna have to, to look, that's what Kendra can probably talk through. But that's kind of the high-level quick overview of what we've been trying to figure out.
Well, I think the thing that I, I've seen, which is probably even something that I, I myself do, is the minute that you say we're going to raise the rent, then everybody's mind just stops listening to anything you've got to say after that. And they automatically just jump in and say, am I gonna have to move, I'm gonna have to look for another place? You know, and so I don't know how you get beyond that, because that's what I was seeing was that, you know, all of a sudden it's, I'm not listening to anything else that's being said because I know that I'm gonna have to pay an extra fifty, hundred dollars, you know, yeah.
That's one of the things that um I've been doing at Aspen Meadows and, you know, our coffee, we can kind of spread out. And I'm gracing them for at least a four percent increase. Cause four percent was what, and I'm not, I don't know about the new financing, but that's what we had the limit on under uh the original um tax credit issue. So I'm just telling you, you know, we've got, we gotta cut costs, you know, and try and get them used to the idea that after years and years and years of no increase, you know, we're, we're due for an increase. So I'm trying to get it gently, you know, so it's not shock. So if it's only a three percent, oh, Jean was wrong, they'll love it, you know? But you, but you see what I'm, I'm trying to get that tone, you know, ease the, easing that, but anyway.
So we, we tried to, when we first sat down to kick off this, the budget, we came up with a list of everything, what costs are increasing on us.
Yeah.
That we can't control.
Exactly.
And what things can we control?
Right.
And almost everything was in the can't control bucket, like salaries and um costs of no, not all of the expenses virtually. And then on the one side, we have the things that we can control. Residents were requesting more access to funding for activities and amenities and those things. And that was the only thing that was in our control. And we want to be able to provide that, we've heard that over and over and over, that's what they want. So how do we handle all this? And then can we still handle this, want to, how does that all work? So that's what framed it for us, like, when you're thinking about everything that's changing in the world and the cost of everything, that's, it's just, it's just a tough spot.
Yeah, that's no, it's no different than, I mean, it's a little different than the city budget, but to give you an example, we took, we have level one, which is must pay bills. Um, we typically average between seven and nine hundred thousand annually in level one increases, is one point nine million dollars a year. I mean, that's just the impact of the pollution. And so we're seeing the same movement, it's not dramatically different than what we're seeing in, in the cities. It's just that we have more room via diverse revenue sources coming in that we could hit some level two. But, you know, between our level one increases and our salary increases, that's eight millions of dollars, and we're seeing the same thing.
Well, one of the things that they constantly talk about is that, you know, people are being replaced all the time. Well, the answer to that is, you know, the salaries are higher somewhere else, so we need, in order to keep people, we've got to meet those salaries.
So we plugged in, um, I talked to Kendra Friday, on this, we're, we're actually um coming in with the same approach that we use for the city, assuming that um, cause that we saw some of the benchmarking data that wasn't, um, I didn't quite get it, but I think the problem is the data source, which is external to us. Um, so basically, if you're at market or um even over market, cause that's where I'm seeing a mix, um, six percent increase matching what we did for the city. And then if you're under market, max the increase out at twelve percent. So it's exactly the same philosophy we're using on that data set. And that's critical because people are moving and, and they're flipping pretty fast on us. So we think that we're just gonna take the same approach and then um I might work with Jillian in terms of the Mercer study that we paid for to include the housing authority positions um in that benchmarking process as well.
Yeah, that's, okay, cause, cause any increase we have is gonna end in fact what's available from housing just.
Well, the Mercer study is these, you know, so um everybody in, seems like in Colorado was reaching out to compensation consultants. Um, and we put an RFP out, and we had a lot of in-state consultants, they weren't giving us what we wanted. Because what we were specifically asking is, I don't wanna know how we've always looked at compensation, I wanna know what the future compensation's gonna look like. And so none of our, our more in-house state could really do that. Um, so we went to the big three, which is Towers, Watson, Mercer, and then.
Is it?
Anne?
Anne?
No, it's a. Not ours, yeah, anyway. Um, Towers and uh if you've watched, if you've read it and you see in R O, you'll see Towers and Mercer being quoted. Um, they both kind of engaged, Mercer really engaged, and so we've signed a contract with Mercer and that works underway now. So we're gonna bring this in too. And we'll see, we're gonna see, um, uh, but yeah.
Are they factoring in benefits as well?
They are, this is gonna be a total comp look in terms of benefits. The interesting piece on that is we used to be really well positioned on benefits. Um, we're starting to see that people are catching up to us. And so, um, but we're still, I think I would say, in the top quarter, top third in terms of, especially now with the benefits that we brought over with the health insurance and things like that, but we're seeing people catch up. And that's to the city's perspective, I don't, I don't have a really good sense of total comp, I'll at least say on the housing side, but it will be total comp.
And part of the problem with the benchmarking, at least for the housing authority side, is there's only like six to seven companies that submit stuff to the survey. So, you know, what we were seeing, what we're having struggles with this year is like, it's different companies, they have different amounts. So it's either going down when we just raised you, because last year, different companies reported and it puts you up, so that's why we had to. We did have people falling in within the six to twelve percent range, but we did have some that were going over and we did have some that are going less, and that's why we said max is six, or minimum is six, max is twelve, so that we could at least be consistent. Because they're still getting the city guidance as well and listening to that. You know, our LHA staff is also listening, that they're probably expecting anywhere from six to twelve percent as well, because they're listening to the same.
And they're working alongside, and they're working alongside.
And, and, and the, the data issues are not unique to the housing authority, so we were, that's, and that, what we were seeing um in Mountain States is the one that was getting information, and so what ends up happening is, so not everyone was presenting, so literally I had positions that I specifically dug in with our comp and benefit person, where literally, you may. Where literally, you may have ten people come in in the previous year's study. And you could have five people come in in this year's study. And those five were the lower-paying entities. So all of a sudden, they artificially shifted the market down because you lost your higher-paying entities. And, and so it was the, it was just chaotic in, in that. And it's so dependent on who submits their, their pay information. And, and so we just, um, started going out to agencies and looking at what are they planning on for increases? The other thing we saw is Mountain State said, oh, we think it's four percent arrangement. Well, I'm in the meetings with all the city managers and they're talking of six. So we came back and went, no, that's not what we're hearing, and sure enough, six is pretty close. On the city side, we were able to hold some dollars. That if, if we have to make some more movements as a result of Mercer, we have some dollars to do it. It's gonna be harder on the housing authority side. So that may be more of an incremental step into if we see some big shifts.
So is the overall thing based on the CPI nationally or locally?
No, it's, uh, you, you base it on market. So like if Tom were an engineer, so we go in and look at the engineering market. And we specifically look at that, so when it, that, the engineering market is one that we had to adjust by ten percent mid-year because it moved that much that fast. And so that's the problem right now, is everything is in flux and, you know, we're in a, we're in an arms race. Um, not, not only with public employers today. We're in an arms race with private employers in terms of hiring individuals. And, um, you know, if you drive by McDonald's and you look at the window, I said it's sixteen fifty an hour. And so we shifted, last year, our hourly employees up at, at as much as three dollars an hour to thirteen fifty, or to fifty fifty. We also planned in this budget with, um, how do we do it even more? So everybody's just chasing everywhere. And, and, and that was, we thought that would change the further we got out from the pandemic. But I think what we're starting to realize in the labor market is a lot, a lot of, um, boomers were hanging on to their jobs. I think what we saw as a result of the pandemic was that a lot of them just started saying, it's time for me to retire. And you have Gen X coming behind them, which is half of the labor force. So you don't have enough bodies coming in. And granted, the Gen Y and Z are larger, but they're just not at the same point in the job market. And so that is, I think, what's creating some of the pressures. So rents, Kendra?
Yeah. So, so part of our struggle too is what we found is, last year, about the same time, we went and we updated all the properties to the, to the tax credit rent so we could get an idea. Here's what the tax credit rent is, here's what rent's happening, what is the gain or loss? Now, are we gaining because we have subsidy? Are we losing because the rents weren't at what they needed to be? What we're finding is the community managers have had access to change those numbers. So that's what I'm doing right now, is changing them back. And I've locked down their access to that. But we've lost that visibility. So it looks like we have no gain to loss, and it was really hard to project revenue because we don't really know what the tax credit rent is anymore. So that's what I'm updating now so that we can get a handle on doing that report that Harold, Harold's suggested. So that we can see exactly like, okay, where are you at? You know, where is this person at versus the tax credit rent? Um, and what can we, you know, because you're gonna have people that could be close to the tax credit rent. You can have people that are not even close, because they've been in the property for so long. And if we haven't had rate increases, it's gonna be a little different. So how do you, how do you juggle that? How do you say, this person's already at tax credit and wouldn't have any rent increase? Because you can't go above that. And then you have this person who's not. You know, so that's, that's gonna be the struggle, I think, for, you know, once we start. You know, you can see some are gonna get an increase and some are not. And then you have to talk, I, I was, he's one of the things. But they don't know what each is paying, right? So how do you, how do you work with that struggle as well?
And it's income-based, and it's this. And so, um, we will then probably, when we get this and start talking, we will be in every property kind of working through. It's not the same for everyone, and here's why it's not the same for everyone. And, and, you know, if you moved in more, in, you're a more recent move-in, you may not have as big or an increase just based on the fact you've been at market. And part of that message, I was thinking about it on the way here, is also, you also, those who have to have big increases have also had the benefit of really not paying what they should have been over time. So there has been savings for them over time too. Granted, it doesn't ease the blow anymore, but, and again, reinforcing what Molly said, any policy for increases has to meet the fair housing test.
When is the last time that rents were raised? Was before you guys took over, right?
Yeah, I, I actually even think they might have gotten it before a rate increase, at the end of two thousand nineteen, but it didn't get enacted because of COVID. COVID happened, so I don't think they enacted it. So I don't know what happened between that. What I'd like to do too is, once we get this data, is see like, okay, what is the, the tenant that has lived here the longest? How long have they been here and what do those tax credits look like? Like, how has the tax credit been increasing? And how have LHA been increasing? We may see a flat line, we may see, you know, we may, you know, so it might be interesting to actually see that. But to get us to the tax credit might take some time for some of these.
And I don't think that was mine twenty seventeen, that's from years. But I'll go back and mine, I heard it in my mind, but I don't think it's, um, that's the reason.
Well, I think we were noticing that with the Hearthstone Lodge, you know, they weren't requesting increases. Um, I requested, um, I think one property was eight percent and one property was ten percent. Um, now, obviously, that doesn't affect them because they're already paying.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah, they're at subsidy, so whatever it is, it's gonna be HUD paying.
Yeah.
I came back and said, with the lodge, you only get five percent. And so I said, is there an appeal process?
Yeah.
Because basically, he took everything that's like standard. Like, he took the wrong, um, salary for the community manager. And so he was deducting that. He took our insurance, which is, we're gonna have to pay that. He took some money away from that. I was like, these are, these are all areas that we can't deduct from. So he got some more information from us, and, and even the snow removal, the snow removal, he dropped me down to eight thousand dollars. And I said, we've already spent fifteen thousand this year, we had, we're not even through the, the full year. So, um, he did request the procurement for the snow removal, so he gave them that. And like, the problem is, is that our, and he was going off prior years. And the problem is that our prior year snow removal contract was based on monthly. And that's probably why they terminated our contract. They weren't getting it on a per pole basis. It was like twelve hundred dollars a month. So if you had five snow poles in that month, he couldn't even afford to pay his employees. So I could see why he would have wanted to terminate that contract. Um, but we could get it down without coupling it with the landscaping. So hopefully, it's back out to appeal, so we'll see. But they weren't gonna give us more than five, a five percent increase. So we'll see what happens, and if they, if they don't, if they say no. Uh, because I imagine every housing authority, every two oh two property's gonna be coming in because they all have, have inflation.
Well, and it also depends on the market too. So where, you know, Boulder County, I mean, so they work on a regional level, right? So, hi, this is a region. And so even within the metro area, Boulder County pricing's gonna look different than, well, let's even say the Springs. I mean, that's probably the most drastic financial is. Um, our price is completely different than the Springs. And, uh, and so, I think that's where Kida has a hard time, is they look at it on national and regional averages and maybe sometimes metro areas, but they don't understand the nuances and the difference in the metro areas. Now, let's also eat up like our, uh, project-based vouchers too. Will that decrease that as well if we're increasing the lines?
Um, no, so, so the project-based vouchers, you cannot go over a market rent. So you can, so if, if market rent increases, we'll be able to increase that, but it's only gonna really hit the subsidy unless the, the tenant's income changes. Um, so we'll still budget for the market rent for any PBDs for project-based vouchers, and we'll do the tax credit for all the others. But any HCB we will not budget for. We won't budget for that increase because they're portable and they can move. And that's kind of actually cushioned us, because basically, loving the budget, we actually have more revenue coming in, but a lot of that is because of the HCB. You know, some properties, we started with three that had HCB, and now we have seven. So they're making more revenue because we do get to go to that fair market. And they weren't going to that fair market before we came on. Uh, we also did get the suites, um, we had to go through DOH to get approval to increase the voucher at the suites. And so we did get approval, so those will be increased. But they, they won't be increased, I think, to market. I think they had to go to a little shy below market because we have asked for increases along those, too big of a jump. Um, but it looks like the entire party will be changing their fee. And then, you know, utilities are going up. I think the, the cost is anywhere from six to twelve percent, depending on the utilities. Um, we're, we're seeing just increases across the board. It's great that we have both David and Calvin on board because they've saved a lot of money just with not having to do a third party to do the repairs and the labor. They're just being, you're able to purchase the parts. And they're working on getting very many agencies, um, hooked up with LHA so that they can get the parts at a, at a reasonable price, so, yeah.
Good, good.
Issue credit requests.
So, the only thing I, I just wanna say, when you guys go out to these, um, places and talk to about rent, please don't move their bread table. When we were at Village Place, when they were trying to talk about rent, the people really wanted to talk about the fact that they were going to move the table with, that has all the bread and goodies or whatever else on it, to another area that would be really, I mean, would be just fine. That was the major thing they wanted to talk about that day was do not move our bread table.
Which was interesting, so I walked out and I was trying to get to another meeting and someone caught me. And, and so, they were like, that was ridiculous, it's fine. And so there's a whole fight occurring right now, and there's, I think, three factions. The ones that were talking to me were like, it's fine, it's not a big deal. They were actually mad at the lady that does the newsletter because of the plants. Because they voted to not have the plants there and she put them there anyway. So they were mad at her. They were also mad at the lady that was really on the, they were mad because, um, what, what we didn't know where we were sitting was, and where I think you were sitting, was they kept telling her to shut up, but she wouldn't.
Right, they did.
And so, so there's, there's three factions in there. So it was interesting, after it was all over, they were all, we're sorry. Um, and, and I should have said this to Lisa sooner. So they said, it really has been better than it's ever been, and we're sorry, and, you know, we're trying to help you, so it was, it was an experience.
I was gonna say, they even had the signs on the walker protesting the bread table movement.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just moving it to another floor. I mean, you gotta go somewhere to get it anyway, it's like.
Yeah, and you know, I didn't, I couldn't get into it a lot then, but just based on the nature of the traffic we have there, um, from a, um, what do you call those people, exterminators? We, we need to be pretty on point on what we're spraying on anywhere near entrances, especially at that location, because I think the opportunity, um, we know that the people that sometimes congregate in those areas carry bedbugs. And, um, we, we've run into our own issues with bedbugs, but, you know, we've seen it in our buildings. And it doesn't take much for those things, for bedbugs to, to take hold in a facility, and so, um, and I didn't wanna get into that depth. But yeah, we need to do the, the heavy-duty spraying on those entry-level floors because that's gonna be your first entrance point for any kind of, um, bedbugs or, you know.
Well, I just have to bring that up.
I, I've had some PTSD over that one. So where are we on the rents then, Kendra? Are you still piling through?
We're still piling through because, um, last week, both Friday and Monday, we're getting ready for the MRO audit and getting that stuff sent over. So, um, yeah, we might be, um, I might be contracting a Diana's help to help get. I've gotten two properties updated. Once I get the properties updated, it'll be quick. We'll pull up reports, do some new lookups and, and get all the data. So that's not gonna take too long, but it's getting the time. It takes the longest. Because it won't update certain units if they already have certification. And they're already, you know, these community managers are on top of their game, so they've already got certifications out for, ready for December. So they've got those, I can't change the insurance act again when they change themselves.
So that's our high-level budget discussion. I promised Kendra I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to, to the numbers that are all in flux, but.
Well, I mean, and that is, that actually is high-level.
I know, that's how complex it is here.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, around the bad debt policy revisions?
So Kendra, I put this, if you may not recall, but I put this on here because this is gonna go to the board November first as well. The, she's gonna be redlining, but we just updated the bad debt policy in twenty, the end of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
The beginning of twenty-one.
We're taking some edits to that to the board so that Kendra can build that into the budget. And because, like, for example, we're preparing for an audit that's happening at these two properties, very important one. Um, and that all, it's all playing in, we wanna make sure that that policy is, um, reflecting what we need to. So I just said that, that this was, I know it's not written yet, the red lines aren't written.
Oh, I've started.
Oh, good.
Yes.
So you just wanna give, again, this is on high levels, if it is going to the board before we meet with you.
So part of it was, um, I think just a miscommunication, um, between accounting, community managers, like who, who's, who was responsible for what? Um, so we're getting a little more down into the details to say, okay, initial letter goes to Lisa. And mainly because we were having initial letters go out, that may have had too much cleaning, like this person's been there for fifteen years and they're being charged for, you know, paint and everything that, that would have been normal with the tear type of thing. So the first initial one goes through Lisa so she can scrub it to make sure that, you know, the charges are, are, are good to go. Um, once that, then the community manager, um, does a thirty-day notice and a sixty-day. The thirty days, like, you know, just try to work out repayment plan, whatever, sixty days, that'd be like, you know, in thirty days, we're sending you over to collections. Um, then it'll come to our department to say, is it worth going to collections or do we just need to write it off? So we'll have a threshold there. Um, and then we also needed to add the housing twist voucher because they're finding a lot of misreported income, and we probably have ten right now that we're tracking on a repayment plan. They come in and they sign a repayment plan, and we have to, um, we just figured out how to get it into YARDI, so we have a ledger and we can, we can see that. Um, but that needs to be put in there too, because their, their process is a little different. They find the misreported income, they bring that to, you know, they bring that voucher holder in, they sign a repayment plan, you know, and then there's an area of default, like, are they paying, are they not paying? And you don't know what the levels are there too. Um, so it's just getting more detailed and fine-tuned so that everybody knows really what their responsibility is.
So there's two important things. First of all, if it was just a pretty basic process revision, we wouldn't necessarily, necessarily take it to the board, but because this is for you too. Because they have to operate Kendra to make the call on the blank where you're making the call, whether to go to collections or not.
Yeah, well, that, and, and we wanted to also give me some responsibility to like, if there's six dollars left on the income. Yeah, well, that, and, and we wanted to also give me some responsibility to like, if there's six dollars left on the income, to be able to write that off. I'll have to look for Carol, I'll have to, you know.
They already did that to say if it wasn't over.
No, they did yours, if it's not over five thousand, but there, I'm not in there. I'm not in there, so I can't.
I can delegate that to you then.
I did put it in.
I don't know that we necessarily need that changed, because I can delegate you to say, you have three thousand.
Anyway, this is good discussion for this.
Yeah, so actually we have a lot of, a lot of stuff out there that's thirty small dollars and it's just sitting out there.
Well, and the other important piece that's feeding into this is the, the stuff that she's finding for HCB, well, actually it's Tracy's group. Um, we are in a phase, I don't think we talked about this last time, we are in a phase where, um, we have full staff in HCB. We have a compliance manager going back through and really doing quality control checks. And we are finding fraud in some instances, we are finding mistakes and old things that we're trying to fix for the benefit of us not getting in trouble as, as the housing authority, but also the tenant not getting in trouble or being in an even worse payback situation. So we are getting a good amount of complaints right now, cause people were, were used to a certain thing and it was not correct and we're trying to correct it. And now that's not comfortable, so, yeah, we're in that phase, but we're really doing, it's feeding into everything else and trickling into our policies to make sure we're, um, just starting from a good foot.
So I'm meeting with everyone on the HCB, um, I'm meeting with them alongside with Tracy. Um, on anyone that was over, Eric is at five thousand. And so I've had three, four meetings so far. Um, and so we work payment arrangements. Um, just so you know, uh, typically if folks come in and they accept responsibility, the typical payment arrangement is three years. Um, if folks come in and accept responsibility, um, and all of them have at this point. Um, I have taken them to four years because I want them to be successful too. Um, and so we spend some time talking about what that means, work with them on setting up the appropriate date for them to, to pay, uh, what they owe in arrears so that they don't default. Cause if, if they don't pay and they don't hit the schedule, then we do move in to, to take away the voucher. And so we spend a lot of time talking about financial capacity, what's the right date for you? Um, and, and so we'll see how they do. We have one that we're dealing with, and I'm gonna talk high level on this one with you all and not mention names because of the camera that you are likely to hear about that, um, had, has not been backed. And, and we, well, we had a couple, um, that we, we forwarded to the appropriate authorities based on fraud. So because it's federal dollars, we have a responsibility to ensure that fraud doesn't occur and you have to report it to the appropriate authorities. Um, a lot of times we start with our police department, it could shift to the office of inspector general. We haven't had any high enough, but if it gets high enough, it'll go to the FBI. Um, my last jurisdiction, we didn't really have an OIG near, so most of them, like, those types of things went to the FBI. Um, we have one we're dealing with now that, uh, uh, the level of, of fraud is, is significant. Even to the point of seeing documentation that they provided to us from other entities that it was, uh, altered. So, um, today or tomorrow, a letter's going out from either the individual saying, we've reviewed it, here's the history of your case. Um, we, it appears that frauds occur and we're forwarding this to the appropriate authorities. Um, so if you get a friend to call, you need to call, uh, Molly and myself pretty quick because that may be coming up in the next week or so. And, uh, but yeah, so it's, it's a lot of, we're having a lot of these meetings. And, you know, for the most part, I would say eighty-five percent, ninety percent of them were saying, yeah, I, I didn't do this. And, and what it's, what's happening is, so if, if I had a voucher and Molly, um, was, was a roommate, I have to report Molly's income. Um, and that impacts my voucher. Um, and, and so that's where you'll see it, sometimes intentional not reporting, sometimes they just forget. And so when we meet with these individuals, we're telling them, if anything changes in your income, you need to report it to us immediately, pick up the phone and call us so we can do this. And, and so if Kendra was my kid and Lisa was my kid and Kendra went to live with my mom in Texas, I would have to report that adjustment because that lowers the amount of money that, that we have. And we're seeing all of those things occur.
So that's just, that's up on the bad debt policy. Whether, it may, may or may not go to the board on November first, but it will be updated regardless.
So now let's go to number seven now, resident call you later.
So from my side, I'm just, just reporting on, um, what we're doing based on the discussion last month with you all. So tonight I'm just gonna be giving the board, um, a summary of what you discussed and how you want to move forward with, um, using that survey data.
Did Lauren get back to you?
She did not, so I was gonna remind her, it's all right, I'm just going to give kind of the plan tonight and then provide a summary, let's see if you'll be able to do that. Um, so basically just summarizing our last discussion. So if there's anything you want me to add to, just let me know, but I think that's for tonight, that's all for tonight.
Well, I have a question on this. So I sent you the contract, you called me, I called you back, I haven't heard. Are we squared away on why the contract was?
Sorry.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's, it's done, I think, for now. I guess my biggest concern is how we're divvying up the money. Based on what we had talked with them about, I guess I don't, I see a, I see a, a potential, um, problem both for them or for us as far as maybe money being either overspent by somebody or, or underspent. So that's what I'm concerned, but the way it is right now, we're, we're talking two months. I mean, we're only talking for the end of the year.
Yeah, so I think what we did was we took your pricing, we multiplied your pricing times the number of trips.
Right.
And then we added two more trips or one more.
One more trip and then a little bit of cushion for overhang.
Yeah, and that, that's how we did it and I think, you're right, and we had to split it up into, I wanted to, we initially wanted to do it all one, but the contract that we're utilizing on the city side is an annual contract. And so we amended this one, the one for next year, we'll build it into it, um.
As a separate line item type thing, so that, I guess, we don't wanna, I guess, then we talked about this, is that we don't want to lose any of that money that they gave us, that we wanted to kind of carry forward.
And it will, so the way that we work our budget, so this is city funding, it's not housing authority funding.
Right.
So when it goes into our system, I asked the council, and we talked about this, to allocate enough for next year too. Uh, because we knew this budget year was gonna be tight, um, so they allocated forty thousand dollars. Um, it could theoretically carry us, if we, we'll figure that out, but, um, what happens in the budget process, that will be moved for this. And then, once we get into next year, um, we will do a carryover as part of our accounting process. And, and so it'll stay with us. And so we won't lose that money because it'll be budgeted and the carryovers come through me. So I'll, we'll catch it, but, um, in the next contract, instead of amending it, we're just gonna include it in the, the contract associated with what we pay them for as part of the city. And hopefully we will see in the next two months the numbers to, to really inform the next contract. But we have to split everything up just because of the nature of the contract.
Right, and, and I understood that from it, I get, I guess, I just, um, have been very hesitant of saying anything to them about the fact that we have, you know, now we've got thirty-five thousand left. Yeah, I just, I, I don't, I don't want anybody to look at that and say, oh, great, we could just, you know, do some wonderful thing. And not on our end, you know, really maybe more on Vias, because I don't know that much about them, you know, so it's, it's sort of like, we're sort of, kind of.
Yeah, and that's why we're telling them, it's, it's the number of trips that you all wanted and it's the additional trip for the holidays, and so they can't be a contract, go beyond that.
Right.
So. But, you know, we've worked well with Vias before, so I don't, I don't think they would do something that's not in a contract and then come back and say you owe us. I know Frank pretty well.
Yeah, they, they were easy to work with for years. In terms of next year, cause Lisa, you're gonna be getting some good feedback on who really uses this. Cause I'm surprised that it's gonna be an all-day thing, but I guess until we get routes and whatever.
Yeah, they're working on the routes, I turned that over to them yesterday and to figure out how to.
If we have some properties that really don't use it, um, would that, if we can use that data from now to change for next year. So not having some, the statement of work to work differently.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, some may only need one, others may need three, and so we're, we're gonna be learning through this.
And there may be some properties that don't use it.
And, and we may have to, in the next contract, cycle be flexible enough where we can make adjustments throughout the contract. Based on usage, so yeah, we gotta build that into next year.
Yeah, yeah, and, and they're, they were open. We met with them yesterday, they were open to that, so.
Oh, yeah.
Have we gone to backfill?
No, she was checking on that yesterday, cause, um, Arlene and I met with two reps from Vias and so they were gonna, because they said, um, whoever it went to was really knee-deep in other stuff and.
Yeah, cause I think now we're waiting on them.
Yeah, so, yeah, their goal is to have this rolled out November first, so.
Cause we got it to them first of October, we hit our timeline and getting that, and now we're just waiting on them to get back.
But I think the fact that we met with them yesterday is gonna push this along, because it's a better understanding of what they're expecting, what we're expecting and, and going forward, so. And, and Tom, this is a grocery shopping thing that we're kind of trying to work out for the places here.
And so tomorrow they're gonna actually, Vias is gonna go meet with residents, do like, just a thirty-minute briefing of what they need to do and how this is gonna roll out. Um, so we're, we're just rolling it to hopefully get it out November first, so.
Yeah, have you, have you got tentative dates for each month?
Yes.
And that's gonna help them?
Yes, so, first Tuesday and third Thursday and then the twenty-second, I think it was, for the actual shopping trip for this year.
Down to the wire, December, not February.
Is that gonna be in November or December? December.
The twenty-second?
Yes.
Got it. That'll be fun.
Go on to number eight, uh, LHA report, update on operations, occupancy report.
Um, so I had the occupancy report agency, we did a drop to ninety percent, which is painful. Some of it is due to, um, shortages, we, we haven't been able to get appliances and I can't run a unit with no appliance, so. We, I, Ken will see it on my credit card bill, I had to go to appliance factory three times and buy four models to get a refrigerator and two stoves in. Because we could not get appliances through our contractors or it's six to eight weeks out. Um, so that was part of the drop. Um, we're starting to see, the guys have been great about getting on the units, so those, we do expect occupancy to increase and we have two waiting lists currently open, which is Fall River and Village Place, because they have had some long-term rentals. And even with the waiting list open, we are not finding people can move for sixty to ninety days, they're not local or they're in a lease and they don't wanna move until, you know, they, so that's the hard thing. So as we're getting people calling saying, oh, my mom wants to move now, I'm referring them straight to Village Place and Fall River, trying to get those rented. So.
Wow.
On the bottom, I've added the meth contamination units, so you'll see seven one one zero, which was at the suites, that's a meth unit from last year, that is now back online. Um, we are working to rent it, it's through, um, LHA, it's an LHA unit, but main is still needs to go in and finish up some of the stuff that construction doesn't do. They don't check the drains, they're not, you know, putting the coat rod, the closet rods and stuff like that. It's our responsibility after them, so we are just finalizing those up and, um, waiting for Housing to send us something to put into that unit. Seven one one four, that is a meth unit from earlier this year, it is probably about halfway through reconstruction. Um, Aspen Meadows three oh five, that was one.
Hey Lisa, but how many MHP units do they have there?
Right now they have, I wanna say eight, I have it up here. Nine MHP units now.
So, I had a question about that, cause I was wondering, do we put a contract with that MHP on how many places that they can rent? Or do we wanna try to pull some of those back to, to LHA or?
Uh, it is their vouchers, MHP is the voucher holder, but they did, we do have, they have three sources they are pulling from now. And this is something Kathy worked on right before she left, cause before they used to just use the DOJ, DOH list. But now they are using, um, Boulder County One Home List and then they have another list that they're using to pull. So some of these people are coming through the routes faster, they just filled two units last week through the One Home List. So they have three avenues now to fill their units.
Do they need to coordinate it in truth?
Yes, they do.
All right, let's set a meeting up to talk with Ale Berto and get with occupancy, who's in the, potentially the safe lots. And they're finding the safe lot, individuals in the safe lots, part of the issue is they don't qualify financially. And we, we have to figure this out with Ale Berto, um, they're actually able to house them in market-rate housing. Um, so these are individuals who may have lost a job or had a health issue, they didn't get a job. And so they're, they're able to do it, but let's get into that because maybe we can order them to fill those spots.
Three oh five, uh, Aspen Meadows, we were not expecting this to be a re, reconstruction, but when we actually got into the unit two weeks ago, we noticed they had ripped out most of the bathroom and stuff like that because of the level of contamination, they could not get it clean. So we have turned that one over to the contractors.
Was this the biohazard?
No, this was, um, the meth unit at Aspen Senior that this, um, yeah. It's just, good thing is we have her on a repayment agreement, so we're gonna have, we'll have that tapped on to this continuing. Um, F three, which was the meth unit from early twenty twenty-one, um, that one is now completed and Corinne has moved into that as a manager's unit, she moved in on the eighth, so that one's done. Um, we have a new one over at the neighborhood, B two. We approved the RFP for cleaning and that one will be probably at least a half a gut of that unit, the living room we know and the master bedroom have to be completely gutted. The, um, second bedroom had very, very low readings. And then we have a new one at Fall River that is going to be a complete gut down to the studs and then a retest to see how contaminated that unit is and possibly more. We've had to test all the units surrounding, two units have come back, one below readable, one was below the cleaning level. The hallways twenty feet down have to be cleaned and so we're reading on the third unit's test results, which should be back later today.
So that was so high, that was the one that was the second highest that this company's ever seen. Yeah, and so we rarely have to retest the studs, um, but we were afraid and we're still afraid. It was so high that the studs are coming contaminated and then you gotta just basically rebuild.
It was, this was an eviction that we did not even know would have left contamination until we started the cleanup of the unit.
The advantage on this one is the, it was, that, that individual is the only one that ever lived in that unit. And so we are legally, uh, going and doing what we need to do to try to get that recovered as much as possible.
And then we have a few others, just, um, we had a biohazard, um, at Fall River that's in the, um, had to rip out half the flooring in the bedroom. And so that one's being worked on right now. We have, um, A four, um, it'll be ready next this week, later on this week, but that one was, um, an eviction that they had been in there for about eight years, fish came full urine, stuff like that, that just took me, it's a long time to deal with and handle and. And then we have a suites, we have a biohazard cleanup there, um, I should be getting that report this week of what the next steps are on that one. And Harold was at that eviction, so he can.
Which one, the biohazard?
Yeah, at the suites. Then I included the unit vacancy report, just to see some of the um vacancies and how long they have been vacant. The two pages and just kind of what we've been working through. And Tracy is having the managers do a report too that will add to that to give us a little bit more data, how many applicants, how long it's taking them. One at Spring Creek, we've had difficulty, it was a meth unit. Low level, did required reconstruction and just a cleaning and maintenance to touch up, but that one's been hard to rent because. Residents are letting them know after we get an applicant, hey, that was a meth unit and they're like, is that a meth unit, we have to disclose it if they ask. We go out and know, yes, it was, but it's been remedied, we have all the reports, if you want to see them, then they decide not to rent.
That's gonna happen.
Yeah.
So so the typical like move outs in that, I mean, is it taking us, I mean, like about sixty days or like two months to rent? They like call wait lists and get through it?
Yeah, and people just aren't.
Yeah, well, yeah, I believe you said they were not available, moving in that. So when the people are moving out, are they giving us thirty days notice or?
Fifty fifty, some of them they go to full time care unexpectedly or they have to go to rehab or pass away, we've had quite a few recently that have passed away. Where we're getting a week notice, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, then we talked about the migration and all of these other issues and. Because of the economic conditions, so it's, we're really, you know, we keep saying perfect storm. The perfect storm keeps becoming more perfect and you're still dealing with supply chain. You're dealing with meth, now you have the economy and inflation and people moving. People moving in with their families because of those issues and so it's just sort of continuing to snowball. One of the things that Kendra and I did talk about is um taking the percentages and actually um. Watching them based on the actual units and what the financial impact is because. Smaller properties may show a larger percentage. But the financial impact may not be the same as what we're seeing in others, and so we need to understand that a little bit too. Uh, it's part of our budgeting process.
And then in terms of the um, you know, being the refrigerators and that, do we have a capacity to say? Put out order in that for six to eight weeks in a place to store it or is it?
That's the hard part, it's funny, um, right now with Village Place, we've been cleaning out the storage rooms, so we will have that temporarily till we start the recent occasion. And that will give us a little bit, but. Budget capacity too to have appliances on it.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And we were lucky for the beginning of twenty twenty two is when Aspen Meadows did their recent occasion. We kept all the good fridges, we kept about twelve good fridges.
We we also have a shed.
Well, it's pretty full though, both your sheds are, so um. Because we got all the extra flooring and cabinets, but um, we took about twelve fridges from Aspen Meadows Senior and put two to three in each. Areas, common area, there was one upstairs for a while, next door still has one, Spring Creek has one that we use as our backup. Even till we can get a fridge and stock if a resident's fridge goes out, so we. And some of them have just gone into units at the suites and stuff just because we had them instead of buying, so. And that's our plan with Village Place during the recent occasion is we want to afford some of those appliances as spares, loaners. As well. So that saved us for the first part of the year, so we didn't really run into this problem till more recently. Credit card bill, I think, was twenty five hundred dollars of appliances.
Is there any way that we can rent them through a rental place or is that not even an option? And I don't even know if there's a rental place here in town, I think there probably is.
I know the one we have closed. Those Arabs rental on. One nineteen in May and it closed, we didn't have to go through a procurement on that.
Yeah. I think our goal is to build in the budget, some budget for inventory, to have things on hand, so we don't have to just order as the need comes up.
Right.
Um, but that's gonna take some time, I mean, compliance is very big. It's a big item shift, but um.
But I am working with um Efficiency Works and the city. We're gonna actually have an energy consultant that they have that they use come up to all the properties. And compare grants with what the age of some of our appliances are and see if there's grant programs to kind of help us get some.
Get back into the energy.
Yeah, there's there's grants and we've done it, that's how we got the lighting in here fixed finally after two years, we have lights now. It was through a grant, we got a fifty thousand dollar grant, so they did all the common area hallways and. Inside the unit bathrooms and then in here to upgrade. And cost allocation, just shadow, like follow them around and let them in units, so. These are the new lights. We're not sitting in the dark.
We're having the lamps on right here, right?
Yeah.
Uh, let's go on to property updates.
So um, I've been able to start, I've actually with hiring staff, I've been able to start my quarterly management walks where I walk with maintenance and we go through. Every nook and cranny of the complete building, I was on the roof here last week, um, looking for stuff that auditors will look at, inspectors will look at. Things that maybe my staff walk by every day and they might not notice it, so and we generate a list and I send it back out with them, health and safety items, they have twenty four hours to correct. Kind of just going through a very detailed inspection, um. It's putting my eyes on stuff that we need to start planning on for next year, and so then I gave Kendra a list of items that we would like to put in the budget. That these properties um could use too, for example, here, if you go up to their common area on the second floor and sit in one of the lounge chairs outside, you'll end up on the ground. Um, so we could start working on different things like that, things that have been neglected over the years. So we are doing that um. Quarterly now and it's on my schedule for the next year already. Um, our lease is under review, uh, we're the second attorney now, we should be getting that back this week. We're the, we already talked about Via, um. And we're actually partnered with Boulder County Health, Public Health, we're doing COVID and flu vaccinations on all the sites, today is Aspen Meadows Senior. So they will vaccinate all the residents, um, if they want any one of their boosters or even just start the COVID shots and do the flu shots for the um high risk.
Do they have um Moderna?
I believe so.
Someone was asking me from the community, I I sent them to Boulder County.
Yeah, so that's what they had last week at Village Place, they had the Moderna, so. So going through the suites, um, NHEG, which is the investor for the suites, was out and they did um. Property torn inspection, they said it was, they were happy with the overall look of the suites and said, um, the files look great, best that they've seen there in years, so we were pretty proud of that. The calls for services still remaining low from public safety. We have two evictions that have been granted by the courts and are pending lockout for. Later this month, next month. And um, had a CHAFA audit on the twenty second, um, they were also impressed with the files and how easy, we had very, very minor um. Things to go back, by minor findings, some of it was maybe a document was missing from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, so we just had to do a trim correct and place it in the file. Nothing, no over incomes, no other issues that they saw, so.
And those evictions, is that all uh based on prior payments like behind on there?
One of them is one that actually um is. A fraud and nonpayment of rent, a lot of issues going on there, so that was actually been turned over to, in addition to um investigate. And then the other one is for criminal activity and residents been incarcerated for quite a few months and nonpayment of rent.
I'm sorry, I'm standing on my back. The the majority of, I mean, I would say the um. In terms of nonpayment, that's probably the outlier on our evictions. It's it's normally um behavior, other types of issues that are driving most of the evictions that we go through. I mean, I can think of maybe like two or three.
Yeah, we've had just a few and they had other other issues, so when we look at it with our attorney, we did a parent room and what's the easiest? Way, what's um will get us the end result, the best way without having to go to trial and turn more hosp. So some of these though, we're we're evicting them for nonpayment, they have other issues, it's just easier for both cases to just do it that way. Aspen Senior had a CHAFA audit, um. Minor findings have already been corrected, RBG audit, um. Scheduled for September twentieth, um, we're still getting the outcome of that one, but we expect no issues because they did audit, do a full audit last year. She touched on the flooring issues that we're handling or working through and um. I am working with Palace Construction as I did my first detailed walk of that property, we noticed some um deficiencies or things that weren't holding up and so. Carrie from Palace came out and walked with me and we, um, boards that were supposed to be cedar around the trash enclosure do not appear to be cedar and already breaking, so. She is addressing it with them, um. Few areas where the brick stain is, looks to be failing or maybe wasn't um sealed properly, so they're gonna work on that. And some of the furniture, outdoor furniture upstairs is not holding up. Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, only thing going on is the meth unit and Corinne has moved over there now, so she will have more presence. Presence there because we've been having, um, they they fluctuate on their calls for service at the neighborhood, um, a lot more. It's full family, so we have a lot more domestic and other nuisance calls, so I think having her presence there and her walking it will bring those down as well. Um, six fifteen main, we have confirmed that this project is not tied to Village Place, so we are working through. That process to see what the next steps are to sell it, rent it, what we're gonna do.
So we're um trying to access the city contracts for, that got them. On call services for somebody that could do a market analysis, not a, you know, something kind of low level, here's what a fair market value would be or. You know, that to guide our negotiations on selling a property, but I need to tap up on that because they haven't responded, I just realized, so. Um, but we need to tap up on it because the CPWD will be, we have to address their lease, the timing, so.
And how much is the investor owed on that property, were they part of that or?
That's what we're 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 having a conversation this afternoon, um, well, we've been working on it. On our side, but we're approaching them today to to see what the options look like. So I don't know if you can talk top of my head, but it's complex. Depends on which option we choose.
Village Place, one of our plans for this year, um, this month is to repaint the whole entryway and get rid of that brown color that everybody. Hates and was vocalized at the advisory board meeting, um, so we, the residents voted and they selected um the trim color and the base color that will go on all the pillars and just the entryway, so. Dave's going to um work on that towards the end of the month, we have this MOR audit here thrown at us, so that is his focus right now, but after that he will be painting.
It's gonna be a light brown, is that what you?
It's a bluish gray, we had, we started out with about ten colors, narrowed it down to some grays and blues and then they voted and. Actually, we had about over half the community vote on their paint color, so.
So I hope I hope the uh architecture doesn't plan on changing that color.
No, they know this is temporary, yeah, so they know this is temporary just to um. Kind of make it fresh, it goes with the carpet and um isn't dated.
Okay.
And we had a coffee and conversations with Harold there, um. Katie provided them a great update of the recent occasion and the process, so I think they kind of know where the next steps lie, um. And what are minor, we're just gonna start on our end, the management side, minor minor steps to get ready for it, so some of this will be. Um, I'm working with a couple of different entities about the commercial kitchen equipment, if we can sell it, if it just needs to be donated, what? Get some more usable items in there and then getting rid of the stuff that was from when before Village Place, I know it was, I guess. They did meal preps, there's tons of dishes that aren't even utilized in there, um, start donating those out.
If you've got any bowls for another.
Bowls?
Yeah, we could use some bowls at Aspen Meadows. We got a bunch from suites, but when we, yeah.
Um, Spring Creek, um, they still have quite a few groups, um, they they've done their. They've really gotten back together since COVID, they have their crafts, I just ordered them three hundred dollars in craft supplies, they sent me a long list, they all voted on, signed off on it, um. They got their chair tri condow, every Tuesday in the common areas, very active up there. The residents there have been really good about initiating um conversations with me and um the manager about. Important issues to them, like um, they know the property's been neglected and so they really want like. New rocks, give her the mold and do the rocks, they really um. Kind of thing. They have horseshoe pits that are, haven't been utilized since the property was built, now they're training mosquito ponds and all that, so with that, we actually have um. Scott, who does our newsletters for LHA, his son's a Boy Scout and he needs to do an Eagle Scout project, so I had a meeting with him. And they're proposing it to the Boy Scouts to come in, CHAF has already approved that the horseshoe pits could be turned into raised garden beds. So the Boy Scouts are gonna put together a whole plan on how they can do that by the um, by the first of spring to have raised. Garden beds more utilized by the residents and then they're gonna look into, they have a couple guys who need to do their Eagle Scout project, so. They're all gonna look at some of our properties and see what they can do. And because they have the fundraiser and everything else, so this, I think will be a great, not just for the residents, the Boy Scouts, but. Great partnerships are out. Um, we had an eviction on September first, um, that resulted in that meth unit that we were talking about, um. That was a huge, they had a huge task on my staff, I'm super proud of them for handling it, it was a. Hoarding unit, uh, it took us an hour and a half to get through just the kitchen into the living room. Um, the sheriff was very kind and gave us an extra hour above our two hour limit. But we did turn everything over to the police during that eviction, um, and then thank you Harold, he had the city come in and pick up everything that was left afterwards.
Two dump trucks.
And that was after the resident sent a U call.
And and the police was out there as well, they they uh, the day before, uh, they did cite him for criminal violations as part of that eviction. And then they were out the following day to ensure that. Everything went well, we had, we thought we were gonna have some issues with friends and they were out there earlier, um, but then when we came out, they weren't there. And he showed up and was kind of moving pretty aggressive until he saw the police there. And so, um, really good partnership with Public Safety.
Um, Hartstone and Lodge, we have the MOR audit here that we're getting ready for, that will be next week, Monday and Wednesday, um. But the residents here are now utilizing this room again now that we have the lights working, so they are, they're having the birthday parties and crafts and everything going on here. We did ask for the lodge for a rental increase. And that's what I talked about earlier, we're waiting for them to kind of go through it.
Yeah, we have to remember for the heartstone, but I imagine he's gonna push. He did say he was going to push for the heartstone because um, they they, when they came in and we're looking at the financials, the financials were not great, as you do more available, but he does. Um, so he did say that he's gonna push for the heartstone to get increased because they're really kind of the same properties, have the same amount of units. But the lodge is getting much more rent than the heartstone is. Um, and he could obviously see that cash was was, cash flow was not good. It's gotten much better, um, just with what we've enacted, but um, if we don't get what we say we need, it's it's gonna be. And that's the one that I think I asked ten percent and the lodge was eight. So he did say he was gonna push for the heartstone.
Then at the lodge, um, we have been dealing with a bed bug issue. I believe we capped it at four to five units, a couple of those units have been completely remedied, um, we had an eviction. For one of them, um, if you see the giant storage container in the corner, that is housing stuff, items, um. No new units, I believe, have been reported, um, we are following the state guidelines, we had the pest control company come in and do presentations at this property and next door. Of what to look for signs, um, they've put traps out, if somebody thinks they might have them, but they, they're not visible to us, we're putting um little traps and everything, we'll make them. Pest control is to kind of monitor those units. When we have a unit that we're notified is contaminated or has. Little pests in there, we are inspecting every unit around them as well as per Colorado, um. It looks like some of these units have had them for quite a while and it's not, but they just popped up in the last month or two, it's that they they had been there and just failed to report. So it's been fun.
Is there a way with our pest control contract, we could look at just putting these traps in units and just check them? On an ongoing basis.
They are, they are looking at what it would cost to go into units monthly, um, and do some other stuff because we don't, we have a contract, but we don't, we do need to go out for RFP for pest control because this was a contract with another company that they bought out and so they don't even have the original contract either, so. Our open positions, we have actually been filling some, so I've filled one of my assistant manager positions and I have one still open. We are still looking for the building attendants for the suites, we have one full time and two part time. Our custodian position has been filled with an anticipated start date of next Monday. We filled the housing choice voucher program position was filled and she actually started yesterday and our new admin position has been filled as well.
So that's the first time we've had admin, specific admin support for LHA for for some time, about a year.
About a year.
Um, and so she's really helping help us with especially walk up folks that we really need a more help with, but also she's a really good point of contact for, to distribute, which was also really, so we're excited.
How sure is this, or is that gonna be quarterly as well?
Should we go back to quarterly too?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. So next month.
Yeah, anything else or you don't need to do this one?
Nope.
Okay. Any other business? All right, so let's adjourn the meeting at ten fifty two.